Good afternoon and welcome to the July 14th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Andrea Boone, Chair of this committee. To my right is Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. To my left is the Honorable Antonio Lewis and the Honorable Mary Norwood. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Okay.
Moved by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, and we have been joined by the Honorable Byron D. Amos. Please open the vote. We have been joined by the Honorable Ishay Collins as well. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Councilmember Collins, can we get a voice vote? All right, the vote is closed. That's six yeas, zero nays. The agenda has been adopted.
Can we have a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Ishay Collins. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
It is now time for public comment. Our first speaker is Ms. Henri Jordan, followed by Ayanna Lofton. Ms. Henri Jordan.
Give not your spirit to God to everyone that's here, but God has chosen the foolish things of the world to confound the wise, and God has chosen the weak things of the world to confound the things which are mighty. First Corinthians 1:27 verse. God has chosen the selection by God designed to silence the wisdom of man. But we are all as an unclean thing, and all our righteousness are as filthy rags. We all do fade as a leaf, and our iniquities like the wind have taken us away. Isaiah 64:6 verse. All our righteousness as filthy rags describes the total depravity of mankind. Our righteousness cannot bless like Jesus' righteousness. He shall not be afraid of evil tidings; his heart is fixed trusting in the Lord. Psalm 112:7 verse. Almost all the sum, however, is taken up with good fortunes of the righteous man, with only one verse dedicated to the observation of the wicked destruction. Christ hates evil, but loves his righteous deeds in us. And he says to them all, if any man will come after me, let him deny himself and take up his cross daily and follow me. Luke 9:23 verse. Finding his life means to wrongfully gain something out of life for oneself. Jesus has more for us than we have for ourselves. Christ, just let me bear the cross that will keep our souls out of hell. We need Christ more than he need us, and he warns us before destruction. Did you see what happened in Texas when a white angel was coming over the sky? And what come after? The floods and the destruction? But Christ warns us before his destruction, because he's angry with sin. Why I gotta keep fighting sin in me, around me, and in others?
Next speaker, Ms. Ayanna Lofton, followed by Ms. Val Anderson.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to speak again. First, I want to say thank you, City Council, and for those of you that are being present in our community and the things that you're doing to help keep our community informed. And we're seeing progress, and I just wanted to say thank you, because Atlanta is a great city, and it's talked about amongst many other cities. Also, I want to just give an update since the last time that I've been here. I want to thank APD for, you know, corresponding, reaching back out. We've had meetings, so there's progress moving forward. And I didn't introduce who I am. I am Ayanna Lofton, the wife of Keith Lofton, who was injured in a police-involved shooting back in 2021 of July, July 25, 2021, and where another individual, Gabriel Sam Parker, he was killed at that time. My husband is serving prison time right now, and he was accused for the murder of Sam, Gabriel Sam Parker, which he didn't do. And that's who I am, and I'm here in regards to just speaking on some things. But APD have been responding back. We have been in meetings with APD, so things are moving forward. The investigation, as far as OPS, as I know of as of today, still haven't been completed. I have been, I did get a call back from Atlanta Citizens Review Board from Investigator Fleming, and he's moving forward with some investigations as far as Atlanta Citizens Review Board, so that's progress there. So, thank you once again for allowing me to speak, and thank you, City Council, for what you're doing in our city.
Next speaker, Ms. Anderson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay. First off, Ms. Boone, I would like to ask you if you have any updates for me as far as me asking for your help in investigating?
Let me, um, do we have anything, does the Law Department have an update for us?
Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. I do not have an update, but I'd be happy to inquire with the Atlanta Police Department to determine whether or not there has been an update to this matter.
What was the last update we received?
The last update that I am aware of is that the matter was still being investigated, and that a final disposition concerning whether or not to bring charges had not been made by the District Attorney Fonny Willis at this time.
Do we know if the GBI is still involved? Are they investigating as well?
I'm not certain as to whether or not they have concluded their investigation, and it is solely in the hands of the District Attorney, or whether or not they are still involved, but I will be happy to make that inquiry.
Thank you. No update today.
Eleven months in. Okay. Ms. Collins, I would like to ask you if you have any updates as far as what I asked you as far as post-investigating Melvin Potter, and why only now post is investigating Melvin Potter?
You said post?
Yeah.
A post in which regards?
That, um, yeah. Yeah.
So, yeah, so I'm not aware of that, and I remember the last time that we talked, last week, we were able, I was able to get the contact information for the DA that should be involved in the investigation on Fulton County, but you know, also it was revealed at that time that we ended up, Attorney Robinson found out that Fulton County had not started the investigation and already have had the GBI report, so don't have any updates on that, on that end. But can, did in fact talk to Chief Sherbaum, and we'll talk to him again about, or mention this piece, and I know we do have the department here about the post-training piece, so thank you for that clarity, but we can look deeper into that. And so hopefully, it is my hope that Fulton County is able to, has provided some information on that end with the investigation. You know, of course, they're going, they're going to be limited into what they're share with us on this end, so it's my hope that getting you in contact with, you know, with Attorney Watkins and the team there beyond, who you've been reaching out to, and Fulton County has been helpful so far. So, that's my hope, but we can definitely talk to Chief Sherbaum and do some more inquiries in terms of the actual training piece, and what are the, what's the thought around the department on that?
Right. Well, that's fine, because like I said before, I would like a thorough investigation, but I feel that the investigation is one thing, as far as like the obstruction charge with Fulton County. I haven't heard anything about that being a separate issue from the investigation to the other, to the charge of obstruction from Fulton County with Melvin Potter. So, I don't, again, like I said, it's two different things that you are trying to make. One, as far as the investigation, okay, that's fine. I want transparency and clarity and everything as far as why Melvin Potter murdered my son. That's not a problem, but we have other issues that we need to deal with also, and I'm not hearing anything about that. So, that's my point I'm trying to make, that you all have enough to move on him getting fired. That much is clear to me. The investigation and him getting fired is two totally different things. So, that's my point I'm trying to make, and that I've been trying to make. You all have enough to fire him for the murder of my son. Thank you.
Devon Barrington Ward.
Good afternoon, Devon Barrington Ward with the National Police Accountability Project. So, last week, we heard from the Cahueta County Deputy who arrested Melvin Potter, another member of law enforcement, who gave a really detailed description of his encounter with Officer Potter that night in 2021 on the side of the freeway, after he pulled Officer Potter over for reckless driving, and he subsequently found that Officer Potter was under the influence while also operating the vehicle. In addition to that, he had a service weapon on the seat, driving over 100 miles per hour drunk, and used his badge as a way to try and soften the accountability that that Cahueta County Deputy was going to invoke that night, which was an arrest. The deputy also told us about how he refused to administer blood, to get a blood draw for his DUI, and that he had to wake up a judge at 2:00 a.m. because he was that cooperative. Now, I ask you, is that somebody that we really want on the Atlanta Police Department force? Why are y'all protecting him? I keep hearing from the Law Department that this is an issue of the GBI file, but let's be clear, the GBI has already let the media know that they have turned that file over to the District Attorney's Office. But what we are talking about is a separate issue, which is the charge of obstruction, which is a continuation of a pattern of Officer Potter using his authority as a police officer, authority that this city has given him to try and skirt accountability. He used it that night when he shot Devon Anderson, and City of South Fulton decided to arrest him. So, what we continue to submit to you all is that you don't have to wait to take action on the murder charge. The obstruction of justice in his previous DUI, along with the fact that he was investigated for domestic violence against another APD officer whom he was dating, is enough for grounds for termination. Why are you want that type of character within the Police Department? It's trash. In addition to that, you having another officer who shot and killed Rayshad Brooks, who started a bar fight, and people saw him walk away from the bar fight, Officer Garrett Rolfe, walk away from the bar fight without any charges, without any arrests. That is unacceptable. And I'm just going to be clear, there will be consequences for this, because we know sometimes, because it's a reelection year, people decide to make different decisions because your names are on the ballot. So, let me be very clear, there are those of us who have the resources and the capacity to text people in you all's district to let them know that this, whether, where they stand on, on how we hold police officers accountable in the City of Atlanta. We will let constituents know that this body and this government is protecting drunk police officers who are on duty, and that's ridiculous. And so, that's not a threat, it's a promise.
Next speaker, Chastity Avery.
So, I'm just here to piggyback on what Devon and Ms. Anderson said earlier in regards to Melvin Potter. And before I do that, Ms. Collins, I just want to say thank you for your support for Ms. Valerie. You know, you've definitely been a tremendous help, and you've been opening up doors and having conversations that we can't have, so we definitely appreciate that. But yeah, in regards to Melvin Potter, and I want to keep speaking his name, because I want his name, I want him to hear every time we come up here, I want us, I want him to hear us talking about him. I wanted to hear his name in the news all the time. So, when it's time for him to accept what he has done and accept his consequences, he knows that where it came from. He knows that it came from the mother of Devon Anderson, that she put him where he's really supposed to be. So, when his time comes to sit behind those bars and to answer to not only her, but to a higher power, that he knows that this is what got him there. The work, the dedication, the determination is what got him there. But he'll have his day in court, and that's soon to come. But the fact that tax dollars are still being spent on him and, you know, him paying his bills and him continues to get, to get his checks from the police force, from the APD, is just unheard of, it's unfair, it's unjust, and it's really a slap in the face to all of us who pay taxes, all of us sitting here, all of you sitting up there. It's such a slap in the face to all of us to continue to provide for him, to continue to provide for him. So, for the life of me, I can understand why he still has a job, why he still has employment throughout all of this. His character speaks for himself. You know, when they say actions speak louder than words, his actions have spoke again and again and again. And, you know, he's still able to smile it off and able to go out to bars and, you know, enjoy himself and do all those things that frankly, he shouldn't have the right to do at this point, especially not on our dollars, especially not on our dollars. So, I thank you all for listening, and I thank you for your continued support for the Anderson family, and hopefully soon, you won't have to see our faces.
I think we have another that wants to speak. If you could come to the mic now? You did not sign in, but we are going to allow you to speak. May I have your name?
Walter Reeves, Workers' Representative. I'd just like to thank you all for everything you do here.
Walter Reeves?
Reeves, yes, ma'am. Yeah, I submitted that Reeves proposal. We're in that monetary crisis. That's just to sweep all that public debt under the rug at the Atlanta Fed. If you could please meet with Raphael Bostic, you can do that. All the public debt from Atlanta Waterworks, all public debt from Atlanta Airport, all public debt from Grady Hospital, and even Atlanta Public Schools. It will put us in an optimal position to face the macroeconomic challenges of our new multipolar world, and we need that done before the, before that Jackson Hole Economic Forum in August. And we're grateful for you all. That's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This ends the public comment portion of our agenda. If there are no objections, we would like to take all legislative items first. Mr. Overton?
Yes, Madam Chair, that brings us to our consent agenda. We'll first take action on our claims.
Can we have a motion to approve the favorable claims? Moved by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Ishay Collins. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. The favorable claims have been approved.
Can we have a motion to adverse the unfavorable claims? Moved by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Ishay Collins. Please open the vote.
One moment, please. Vote is open. Vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. The adverse claims have been averse. Madam Chair, that brings us to our regular agenda, starting with our ordinances for second reading. Item number 50. This is 2501402, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea Alboone to authorize a chief financial officer to pay invoices for services rendered in connection with IFB-S-1220215A for on-call post-certified officers with Clovehurst Aaron Joint Venture on behalf of the Department of Public Works to add additional funding for security services and other necessary functions rendered at various Department of Public Works facilities, beginning August 1, 2024 through March 18, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $334,133.14. All contractor work to be charged to and paid from the fund department organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Move approval, seconded by the Honorable Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Can all council members please vote? Vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. The item is favorable. This brings us to our resolutions. Madam Chair, if there are no objections, can we take items number 51 through 57 as a block?
Please proceed.
Item number 51, 25R3723, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Hunji Lee v. City of Atlanta, Civil Action File Number 24EV002071, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, State of Georgia, in the amount of $80,351.67, the settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 52, 25R3724, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the defendant, City of Atlanta, in the case of Lavanda Thompson &amp; Delvin Byard v. City of Atlanta, and all, Civil Action File Number 23EV005302, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, in the amount of $125,000.0, the settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 53, 25R3725, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the defendant, City of Atlanta, in the case of Nashawn Tariq v. City of Atlanta, Civil Action File Number 24EV003079, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, in the amount of $130,000.0, the settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 54, 25R3726, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the defendant, City of Atlanta, in the case of Dominic Bridges v. City of Atlanta, Civil Action File Number 23EV005575, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, in the amount of $14,000.0, the settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 55, 25R3727, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta, in the case of Susan Solomon v. City of Atlanta, Police Department, and all, Civil Action File Number 22EV005177, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, in the amount of $20,000.0, the settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 56, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the defendant, City of Atlanta, in the case of Tara Johnson &amp; Tamisha Sanders v. City of Atlanta, Civil Action File Number 23EV003514, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, in the amount of $50,000.0, the settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. And item number 57, 25R3729, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta, in the case of Progressive Premier Insurance Company of Illinois, a subrogee of Melina Hicks v. City of Atlanta, Civil Action File Number 24EV009863, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, in the amount of $2,618.95, the settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
I would like to make a motion to approve these items. Seconded by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, six yeas, zero nays. The item are, the items are favorable. Madam Chair, we have no items coming off of the held list today, so thus this concludes our legislative agenda.
This brings us to the portion for our reports. Chief Kelly Collier with the Atlanta Police Department, crime statistics.
Good afternoon, Public Safety Chair, Public Safety Committee, Deputy Chief Collier, Community Services Division. As we look at our, our crime past week or two, we continue to be down during the summer months, 9% for the year, 10% for the 28-day, and 4% for the week. We're able to do this while hosting some significant events in our city. WWE State Farm Arena Wrestling Tournament, Beyonce Concert, Owee Street Camp Cleanup, Peachtree Road Race, and six World Cup soccer events. We continue to look at crime in different ways to reduce crime, and we have done that. And at this time, I'll take any questions that you may have with me.
The Honorable Antonio Lewis, followed by the Honorable Mary Norwood.
And I just want to ask the question I've been asking since May. The, have you been able to find out the amount of police officers we had on December 31st, per zone on December 31st, 2024, and on the May meeting, let's say, May 16th? If I don't have the, May 16th was the date, and on May 16th, reason being, I want to make sure crime has been going up in my area, and we've been seeing it, and we want to make sure that we have, we're judging apples to apples. We had a 30% drop last year, and the year before that, we had another double-digit drop, and we want to make sure that we have the same amount of officers in our zone that they have in other zones?
I can't get that information for you. I don't have that information at this time. I can say that, being that you all were the leaders in crime reduction last year. It's going to be kind of difficult to do that again, but it can be done, but I don't get that information.
And it'd be difficult to get 30% when anybody else doesn't have 10, right? So, I think the question was just to make sure that we, we're counting police cars and officers. And the date, and the reason why I feel good about asking the question now, because it won't let people know how many is there now. And so, I'm just thinking about what we had on December 31st and on May 16th, reason being, we saw the crime drop, but if we had the, we, we, we want to, I've, I've heard a theory in my district and from officers, and from a lot of people in our area, and they, they want to make sure that we have the same support that every other district has. And just want to know how many officers and how many police cars in the area, because if we had a 30% drop, and we had the least amount of officers and the least amount of cars, we want to be able to talk about that as well, and talk about all of the other things we've been doing in the area. So, if possible, if you can get that for us, and I know we've been waiting two or three months now, two months now. So, do you know when we'll be able to get it?
Next committee meeting, you should be able to get that information. We've been pretty busy, but that's not an excuse, but yeah, we'll get that information. Thank you.
The Honorable Mary Norwood.
Yes, as I'm looking at each of the zones, what's up is robbery. Is that, it looks to be citywide in, in every zone.
Right.
So, what, what's going on that, that's plaguing y'all?
And so, what we've seen is an increase in known suspects, drug deals that are gone bad. drug deals that are gone bad, and things of that nature. And so we are putting plans in place to combat those, and we are aware of that. But it's mostly known individuals who know each other. Different type of situations that have not gone the way that some have planned them to go.
Well, that's helpful. It is not... It's not an influx in stranger to stranger.
Stranger to stranger, no.
Okay, thank you.
The Honorable Byron D. Amos.
Yes, sir. Very quickly, just want to say thank you. Send my thank yous to Zone One and Zone Five. I was very nervous about this weekend with the Beehive being in town, WWE, and we actually had an event at Dome Atlanta, but you really couldn't tell it. Officers was out. Thank you for the increased enforcement of parking regulations in the Vine City community. Still got a little more to work out there, but also we see an increase in our parks with the Park Rangers enforcement in our parks. We need to get a little better about when it's time for people to leave the parks at eleven o'clock at night. It's time for them to go home. If we can probably get some cruisers to cruise through, but just overall, this weekend was surprising, and just thank you.
Newly noted.
Thank you, Chief, and I would like to bring to your attention almost every single business along the M L King Junior Drive Quarter, the gas stations. Folks are lauterating between midnight and four A.M. Many of our NPU residents have called regarding that. Some of them work late, and they are not feeling safe stopping at the gas station. So if we could figure out something with those businesses from Payton Road all the way down to the Sitco and the Chevron near M L King, almost to Fulton Industrial, that is a big problem at night, including the bus stops as well.
Yes, ma'am, midnight to four.
Yes.
We did address the issue at the Sitco and along that area, but we will extend those.
Len Hurst across from the Wayfield Food Shopping Center as well. There is just a lot of excessive hanging out and people that are coming home from their midnight jobs. They are not feeling safe stopping to get gas or anything.
The Gray Store, formerly the Yellow Store, that area?
Just all of the businesses, all of them are just inundated with folks hanging out. Thank you so much. The Honorable Ishay Collins.
Thank you. I think most of my questions have been asked, but I do want to kind of lean into Councilman Lewis's point in terms of just understanding, like, you know, employment and the force, you know, like, in terms of, like, distribution of our force throughout the city. Because in fact, looking at the report in those areas where we did have large events, where probably drew large populations of people, those, the crime was down. But then when you look in other areas throughout the city, particularly like his own, it is up. So I think, you know, just kind of understanding, like, are, you know, is that move, how the, I guess, the way we've coordinated or arranged our police presence at this time, you know, at certain times of the year, how it is impacting the area. So I do think that the data that he's asking is key for us, just to, you know, just to understand where you're seeing a twenty percent increase of theft or motive vehicle, well, fourteen percent increase of theft or motive vehicle, twenty-five percent in burglary entering some one zone. I think it went from... Yeah, twenty, you know, the last week it was twenty-six aggravated assaults versus the previous seven-day, only eleven in those areas that didn't necessarily have, like, a lot of outgoing activities. So I just would be curious to have that information. So thank you. Those are all my questions.
Will do.
The Honorable Dustin Hillis.
Thank you, Chairman Boon. Thank you, Deputy Chief. First is calling out the good. The city has seen apparently a thirty percent reduction in homicides, and that is largely being driven by the fifty-two percent reduction in Zone One, which is a large area of District Nine. But the concerning part is, if you look also citywide, ag assaults are up eighteen percent, and Zone One is also driving over half of that increase, going from three hundred and four to four hundred and thirty-five with a forty-three percent increase. So maybe I can speak with my Zone One leadership, but just if you had any insight as to what is driving that in Zone One, are these domestics? Are they at a handful of properties, multifamily properties? What is driving that?
Yes.
There's no one hundred and thirty-one ag assaults?
And you're correct, some are multifamily properties, but as stated before, they're counted differently now. It's the number of people that are inside the residence or people that are in close proximity, and so those numbers are counted.
Thank you for that.
The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
I just want to say something that won't be on the report. We've been doing a little extra crime fight in my area. We love Major Wolf. Our new police major, Zone Three Major in our district, amazing. He's been on the ground, and we, something that's not in the report, we actually just closed down a fitness house in our district. So we actually identified a fitness house, he and I did. We went there, and we were able to close it down with zero arrests. And that house now has affordable, we actually have someone living there who I know was a lady living there with kids. And so, and we also did, and that was NPU Z, now NPU X, we went to another drug house that was in the purchasing community in which he and myself, we legit went over there, and we reached out, and we were able to eliminate that house again. So we want, the reason I'm asking for how many people we have, because I want to make sure we are judging apples to apples. And I want to make sure all this extra work that we're doing in that area is highlighted and is bringing out, is bringing out crime.
Absolutely, and I'll pass that information on.
Amazing man, amazing, amazing major in our district. We needed him down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions or concerns? The Honorable Ishay Collins.
Yeah, I do just have one more, as we were just talking about in terms of the employees, you know, the employee information and data, and I don't know if this appropriate, or whoever we need to speak to as well as understanding in terms of, like, the, you know, training and the discipline processes as well. And so any information regarding that will be great, as we just, you know, kind of hear some of the public comment that we do have.
You said training in reference to?
And training, training, but also some of the discipline processes that we have.
Okay.
If you could provide any details would be great, and if it's something that we need to have more deeper information on as well.
I think it would be really good if we could do a deep dive on that with the chief and give him specifics even in an email, because I do think that the public is wanting to get answers regarding some questions regarding the discipline. Yes.
Okay.
And how that goes, and if we are attempting to help those that have issues with alcoholism and drug use, making sure that they are getting the proper resources and help, so that they are not out and they're getting the support that they need. And I did speak with Ms. Robinson regarding some type of legislation to make sure that we are just getting people the help that they deserve, that they are under a lot of stress, and we want to just keep that at the forefront.
Yes, we do have a number of mechanisms in place, but absolutely.
Thank you.
Next report, Corrections. Chief Elder Dancy. Chief, thank you so much for being here, and I see you have some wonderful interns with you. All interns from the Department of Corrections, will you please stand? Let's give them a hand. If you all could come on up to the mic and tell us your name and what school you attend, come on up. Come on up. Corrections, this is a great profession.
My name is Joshua Hales. I attend Kennesaw State University. I'm an accounting and finance major, and I'm a sophomore in college, by the way.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Demaris Gaines. I just graduated from Virginia State University with a criminal justice degree.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deja Patman.
Just stop, put the mic down a little bit.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Deja Patman. I go to Vaudosha State University. I'm a mass media major with a communication minor, and I graduate in December.
Hi, my name is Mason Nutz, and I'm a recent graduate from Morehouse College in Business Administration.
Congratulations to all of our interns. We hope that you have a wonderful, fruitful career in the Department of Corrections. And now Elder Dancy.
And thank you for that, Madam Chair. They have done an amazing job for us, and we definitely wanted to give them an opportunity to see the inner workings of this body. Thanks for that. So I am Interim Chief Elder Dancy. Thanks again, Madam Chair and other distinguished members for this opportunity. I'll be providing our third quarter report, which covers January, February, and March. Before I move into the presentation, as you can see on the screen on our cover sheet, this is a photo of during Corrections Week. We had a celebration there, and I just want to thank Madam Chair for supporting us, especially our kitchen team. That, those plaques was an opportunity where she and this committee recognize our kitchen teams who do a lot of great work, not just at ACDC, but in the communities as well. So as we move into our presentation, again, this is FY twenty-five, third quarter. We always like to start with our mission and vision statement. This is an opportunity for us to connect with our stakeholders as well as our internal and external partners. Our vision statement is to protect the public while striving for excellence through exemplary customer service and promoting community involvement. And our mission statement is to provide a safe and secure correctional environment, enhance public safety through partnerships with the community and law enforcement. And the next slide is a good segue into a few of those partnerships over the last quarter. The first one is with the Emory Mental Health Team. We continue to work closely with the Emory Forensic Psychiatric Fellows in collaboration with Grady Hospital. As you could see, they saw a hundred and thirty-nine detainees at ACDC. They visit us once a week, twice a week, actually, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And this is an opportunity for us to begin, for some of those detainees, what we always talk about, the continuum of care. They are entered in a database, they are tracked, their medication is tracked, and their future appointments. So this has been very beneficial for us as well as our detainees. And then the emergency management. We continue to partner with the Mayor's Office of Emergency Preparedness, and examples of this are gonna be the Warmen Centers, where we'll talk a little bit more about, Tabletop Exercise for Readiness, and the upcoming FIFA World Cup. And then Second Chance Partnership. This is an ongoing partnership that we have with the Department, the State Department of Corrections Transitional Center. This is an opportunity for those detainees to successfully reintegrate, for successful reintegration back into the community and workforce. And then the next slide, some additional partnerships, as we overlay that with the Mayor's Pillow of One Safe City, an opportunity for all, DEEM, which works closely with us. We have three employees that are assigned to ACDC permanently. But this was an opportunity, after doing a vulnerability study with GMA, they made some recommendations, and one was that they thought we could do a better job securing our perimeter. So DEEM, in partnership with AIM, assisted us with putting a gate around that facility for controlled access. We haven't completed it yet, but we are very appreciative of this project. Someone Cares Atlanta. This is a five-oh-one-C-three organization, nonprofit, community-based organization that provides assistance for our detainees who are living with HIV/AIDS and other health disparities. And the Warmen Center, which is an ongoing partnership that we have with the Mayor's Office of Emergency Preparedness and others, where we consistently provide food, linen, laundry service, and hygiene items for those essential things that are needed during extreme conditions. And as we highlighted earlier, our food service team play a vital role with that. They have been phenomenal, and as you could see, during the Warmen Center activation, DOC delivered over thirty-seven thousand meals to our vulnerable citizens and two thousand sandwiches at the gateway. The next slide is, as we continue to partner with Chief Farley's team at the Mayor's Office of Sustainability and Resilience and Common Courtesy to provide free rides for our detainees. And as you could see, we connected with twenty-nine detainees to provide transportation. And the bottom left there, we also provided a hundred and fifteen motor cards for our detainees, especially those indigent detainees who have insufficient transportation options. In the next slide, there are no significant changes with our employment and attrition numbers. They've been pretty stagnant. And I think we've seen positive outcomes as we look at our pay-in-class study that was supported by council and the Mayor's Office, as well as training opportunity and career advancement opportunities that we provide for our team. In January, you see the sworn numbers, a hundred and fifty-one, sixty-five civilians. In February, a hundred and fifty, sixty-four civilians. In March, a hundred and forty-five and sixty-five civilians. So with the next slide, of course, training at DOC is always ongoing. This is a way for us to show our commitment to the employee's growth, which is beneficial to us and the employee. This is our way to continue to develop new skills and knowledge. And I won't go through all the training that we went through there that's displayed on the top left. But I do want to highlight one training that we received with APD's assistant as well as the Department of Public Works. Sergeant, special thanks to Sergeant M. Brewer with APD and Ms. Melissa Jordan with DPW, who assisted us, who assisted our officers in becoming CDL certified. The picture there on the top right is gonna be Officer King, Officer Weeks, Officer Tino, Officer Williams, and Officer Law, who are all now certified to drive our bus, to transport, and to provide assistance in the community, especially with APD doing those major details. So thanks again to those departments as we work towards what the mayor call our group project. In the next slide, this is our virtual court numbers in person in custody count. We continue to have a makeshift courtroom in our transfer release area, and as you can see, the numbers from FY twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. In twenty-five, we had three thousand and fifteen. As you can see, those numbers slightly have slightly ticked up over the years, and that's partly because of the changes with the state senate bill. And those numbers on the right are just total numbers for each month for our in-custody court count. The next slide is gonna be our in-court statistics for the third quarter, and we also added the FY twenty-four third quarter as well as twenty-five. I kind of wanted you all to see the progress that we've made with our in-court numbers. So in-court is our online service portal that we started a couple of years ago, which is allowing our customers to utilize this portal for a safe, seamless, and simple process. So the in-court numbers, as you can see in FY twenty-four, are a little over four hundred and seventy-five thousand with a payment of seventy-three percent. Cash, a little over a hundred and seventy-eight thousand with twenty-seven percent. And then twenty-five, our in-court online numbers are a little over seven hundred and twenty-one thousand at eighty percent. That's compared to the seventy-three percent last year. And then cash is a little over a hundred and eighty-one thousand at twenty percent. So we hope as we move forward with the next quarter, we'll see those cash numbers drop into the teams, which is very beneficial to us as we are able to move those dollars from in-court to our revenue department, rather than safeguarding them in our vault, going through that process to physically transfer them to City Hall. And then as you can see there at the bottom, as of January twenty-first, our official launch of the e-bonding platform started. This will enable locally-approved bonding companies to post bonds online, simplified and streamlined in the bonding process. So far, we have done eight hundred and ninety-six bonds for the quarter. Then the next slide is a slide we always provide for this body regarding our booking numbers and average daily population. I won't go through all, but as you can see, ACDC numbers are represented in orange, and the yellow numbers are Fulton County. And then on the right side, those are solidated with Fulton and ACDC. But I just do want to highlight our average daily population. As you look at FY twenty-three, we're at forty-three. FY twenty-four, we are at... FY24, we are at 76. And currently, this fiscal year, FY25 third quarter, we had 111, which is, which is our average stay at our facility for our detainees. In the next slide, we always like to provide a snapshot of the top 15 charges at ACDC. Most of these are going to be APD arrests. Nothing has really changed from the previous presentation. Most of them are going to be traffic. Most of those are state traffic charges where municipal court has concurrent jurisdiction. And as you, and these numbers I always mention can be a little skewed because some could include lesser included offenses. The next slide, again, this body has asked us to present during our quarterly report, which covers the gender, race, average age, and average length of stay for our ACDC and Fulton County detainees for third quarter comparison FY25 third quarter. And there's no real changes other than the gender population with those numbers. In the next slide, as you know, our IGA is ongoing with Fulton County. There are no major issues or concerns to report. They are still currently in charge, exclusively responsible for security, food service, and medical. And these are the numbers as of June 16th. They had a count of 430. Currently, today, the numbers are at 440. So they fluctuate from the low to mid 400s generally. As you can see, 287 females and 143 males. And of course, we continue to go beyond the walls at ACDC. These are community engagements where we are always proud to work with our community. This was an event, these are two actually events in District 10 with Chair Boone and her team at Jackson Memorial Church, along with, I believe, Municipal Court and Atlanta Fire Rescue. And this was an event where our team was supporting Health Heart Awareness Month. Of course, this is something that impacts all of our city employees as well as ACDC. So thanks to the team for that participation. Then the next slide, we want to recognize one of our own. Congratulations to Dr. Battle, Dr. Lashandra Battle for the Women of Impact Award, and Dr. Byfield and Ms. Angela Brown for their nomination, as you can see them pictured there. And then again, I want to thank this body for your confirmation and your support back in March. And this is another slide, an illustration of some of the work that we have done outside the walls. And as you can see, pictured to the right there and bottom right is going to be Council Member Antonio Lewis, where we worked closely with him. Unfortunately, we don't have the address location correct. It should have been Sylvance Hill School. Yes, sir, I apologize, my apologies, but we'll make that correction. But definitely enjoy working closely with you as well as with our Chaplain, Chaplain Zachary, and Ms. Cade, who are pictured there in the bottom right. And as we continue to support the Mayor Year of the Youth, this is an opportunity where we went, our team went out, did a reading circle at City View Scholars with Dr. Battle, Ms. Cade, and correction officers Jones, Mims, Portier, and Lane, as we continue to connect and support our youth. And this was a picture of our corrections basketball team. Our team, we pulled a team together to participate in the PAL Athletic League. Unfortunately, we lost in the tournament to Fulton County, who went on to win, but we're definitely very proud of our team. They did a good job of representing ACDC. And then this is kind of bittersweet. We lost three senior officers who had, who did an outstanding job for us. Officer Roosevelt Williams, who spent 32 years with the Department of Corrections. Officer Beverly Parker, who spent 29 years with us, and Officer LaGloria King, who spent 30 years. So congratulations to those employees for their dedication to the Department of Corrections. And that's it. Thanks again, Madam Chair, and thank you all for your indulgence. And of course, we are here for any comments or questions if you have any.
Chief, we would just like to thank you all so much for your hard work and dedication. Your facility is well-managed, it is clean, it is safe, and we appreciate you all taking care of the unsheltered population in times that they need help. You all deliver hot meals, and for some, because I speak with them, this is the only time they get two meals a day and a snack. So I want to thank you all so much, and with your wonderful staff, please stand. Let's give Corrections a hand. Thank you all so much, and we so enjoy Corrections Week. Always keep us in mind. And Chief, if there's anything we can do for you all, you all move around to all of the community town hall meetings, you all are at the food distributions that are sorely needed right now. The lines are longer and longer and longer. You all attend our midnight basketball league games, and we just appreciate that. And now the Honorable Antonio Lewis.
Chief, thank you so much for your service to the city and for taking care of people who are in distressed situations. I'm gonna start in the back. This year on page 19, I'm upset I didn't, that City Hall didn't have a basketball team. Last year, I was one of the three leading scorers on the team. This year, I've been, I was practicing all January, preparing for, and I was going to show y'all something. And so next year, hopefully, I'll be able to be a part of that. When you go to page 17, Chaplain Zachary, Zachary and Ms. Page over at Sylvan Hill Middle School was amazing for us. We don't typically get that interaction in our area with, with any one of law enforcement officers. So thank you, and please continue to send folks to our, our career fairs so the young folks can know about this option. The next thing I learned in here, I was surprised about, something I want you to comment on, the average age of being 35 to 36 years old. Is that, is that a national thing? Because a lot of our times when we see the crimes, even when the police give us our reports, we see young people breaking into stuff, and it looked between, it looked like Gen Z or Gen Xers, Gen Zers. And so 35, 36, that's a millennial. And I'm saying, is that a, is this normal? Is that the age that we have, average age?
That is the average age. We do have our share of young adults, but this is pretty much nationally in most areas, this is the average age. And a lot of those are recidivists, right? You see them come through the system and in and out for different reasons. They may be at Fulton one month and at ACDC a few months later. So yes, sir, unfortunately, that is pretty common, especially in this area.
The, thank you. The next thing I want to talk about, I know you've been doing such an amazing job. You run the best, if someone has to go to a jail, you run the best jail in the state of Georgia as well now.
Thank you, thank you.
The best one in our state, probably in the southeast. The state of Georgia made new laws so that sheriffs can actually, or county commissioners can actually sue and take jails, but it got me asking this question because our sheriff currently is in a legal battle with our county commissioner. And I know that just happened last month, so this is my first time talking to you since then. And my question, first to talk about a little bit, it says that the sheriff, he's suing our county commissioners and the county manager, and it said that they are, the lawsuit basically says they're the, they're alleging unlawful interference with this constitutional duties and that they are mismanaging the jail funding. It says that the suit claims that the county manager and the board of commissioners have undermined the sheriff's ability to address critical issues at Rice Street Jail by obstructing hiring, delaying maintenance, and security upgrades, and imposing restrictive budgetary controls. And so I, when that happened, I legit put in legislation in this body because I saw this sheriff asking for more money and the county commissioner saying no to him. You look at our budget hearings here, I always ask you, how much do you have and do you need more? And so that, that's how I try to legislate. Our sheriff, who's taking care of people in distressed situations, is asking for more and they're saying no. He then went as far as to sue the county, sue. And so I'm asking, is there any roll-off? Is there any rollover to our jail right now? Are we, are we, when he can't hire enough people for the, for Fulton County Rice Street, are we seeing the act of effects? Are you, is he pulling people from where you are?
So first, I just want to say thank you for that acknowledgement and definitely want to recognize our entire team. They do an outstanding job from top to bottom, and that's partly why we are able to maintain the facility. But it's an ongoing job and they work hard every day, so I definitely appreciate that acknowledgement. So I would first start by saying I definitely appreciate the support I have from this body and the entire city council and the mayor's administration. You all have given us the budget that we need to function at a high level. And of course, most of the, our salary involves personnel dollars. So we definitely feel that we are now competitive with the southeastern area. And of course, we have sufficient funds to maintain our facility, which is extremely important. So I am happy that we are in that space. So we work closely with Fulton County. We meet with them at least once every other week, and sometimes before that, if there are concerns, to ensure that they are, the appropriate outcome measures are being met and they are providing the, the agreed service with the detainees there at ACDC. So we haven't seen any major challenges, but yeah, we do have to watch things closely to make sure primarily that they have adequate staffing. I think that's the main concern for us at ACDC because they, again, they are responsible, solely responsible for security for their detainees, as well as medical services and food service. So we haven't seen any significant impacts, but it is an ongoing conversation that we have with them to closely monitor.
No, I appreciate you that, for saying that, for even going that far and being that detailed on it. The, just looking at what our sheriff said, this is why I'm asking these questions. Our sheriff said in, in this lawsuit, he argues that the county's actions have worsened inhumane, inhumane conditions, and they've contributed to a string of inmate deaths and federal investigations that have led the jail to be placed under judicial oversight again. He accuses the county of retaliating against his office for advocating for a new jail. County officials state that they have consistently supported the sheriff's office. And I'm watching the budget, so I'm knowing that that's not what's, and so I appreciate you for being honest and talking to us about that because it's something we have to monitor over here because the numbers, how many people were they supposed to bring, be able to bring in? How many beds did we allow Fulton County to have?
Sure, yes, sir. We allocated 700 beds for Fulton, and they average in the low 400s. But yes, so we have not seen some of the things that you mentioned at ACDC that's, that was mentioned in that report.
Thank you. Can we, can you continue to monitor that? Because if he's monitoring it, if he's suing the county commissioners, I just want to make sure that we're okay over here.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you.
The Honorable Ishay Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I appreciate Councilman Lewis's questions in that regards. I mean, because part of the questions I, I had was just in terms of understand the capacity, you know, capacity piece that we talked, talked about. But I do first want to thank you and your team for all that you're doing outside of the walls of the, you know, ACDC. I do think people do not realize how our, you know, Department of Corrections staff helps with the warming centers and helps with other events. So it's just really good to see you guys out, you know, see you guys outside of the walls where people may oftentimes take a traditional view of what department, of what corrections should, should be. And also wanted to congratulate the retirees as well. I know it's time well earned, and we wish them well on their, their next, their, what they're, what do they call your soft life, their soft life era now. But I do want to just ask a couple of questions. So that you began talked about, you began, I appreciate this, you talked about the mental health services that the, that the center is providing. And I do know we have the Center for Diversion Services as well that's there. And just wanting to see if you can answer, you know, share a little bit more light in terms of, you know, collaboration in that regards, and if there's the need for us to think, think more about scaling up the mental health supports that you all have leaned into and just getting some more insight into that. So my, you know, I guess my most bait, simple question is, I know you served, you provided, you know, as Emory provided this number of, you know, evaluations to these detainees, but do you guys often see the need for more, for more support in that space? My second question does in fact talks about more, goes to more of the Fulton County and the, and how we're supporting Fulton County in their efforts in terms of capacity as they are dealing with the, the Rice Street issue? And understanding what those conversations are about, or there is the need for, I wouldn't say for us to be the middle, you know, the olive branch in all of this, but you know, Chief, just kind of getting your thoughts on if there are some better ways that we could support Fulton County, you know, Fulton, you know, Sheriff Labatt and Fulton County as they are addressing a major issue of constitutional rights for people, people and humans, period. So just those two questions.
Absolutely. And so with the mental health piece, as you know, that's always an ongoing challenge throughout the country, not just in the Atlanta area. So that's important. Now, we do not work directly with the diversion center, but of course, some of our, some of their customers are also ACDC detainees at some point. So we, one of the great things I think that we have with the Emory-Grady collaboration is that I mentioned that they are entered into a database once they see them. Generally, it takes months and months for them to get an appointment, a mental health appointment. So this put them in the system, give them, put them kind of at the front of the line, so to speak, to give them that opportunity. And with this database, it's called Epic and Anywhere, so it, it could be tracked throughout the state of Georgia. Grady, of course, is working at the diversion center, so that information, of course, is shared. So they get a chance to work closely with those individuals to make sure that they follow up on their appointments, that they are taking their medication and fulfilling those prescriptions and so forth, and as well as tracking them. So if they have an episode in South Georgia, if they're in that system, they'll have that information so they can provide service quicker. So then your second question was?
Was more in terms of the, in terms of the capacity piece. So I was looking at, just going to that slide, and I think it was the same slide that Councilman Lewis referred to. Let me go back to it. Is it, yeah, slide 12. And so where, you know, we, where it shows you the largest number of detainees definitely was on the city of Atlanta's side, however, their average length of stay was only three days. And so you just have kind of, you know, which is really good in itself, that let us know they're at least getting their constitutional, you know, constitutional right before a judge and things of that nature. Also, but also seeing the numbers with, I thought the numbers would be a little higher for Fulton County, you know, with the support on the Fulton County side, just knowing what's happening in Rice Street as a larger facility. So just, you know, just wanted to, in any more context, if you have any, would be great, or is there a need, you know, is there a need for a deeper conversation? I wouldn't say like a task force or anything, but a deeper kind of collaborative conversation. So while Fulton County does have this agreement with us, they can maximize it while they address the issues on Rice Street to ensure that we are taking, you know, that our, you know, our people and detainees are being taken care of because you do have a very good operation, even, you know, and I had the opportunity to visit as well here. So just wanted to kind of get your thoughts there.
Yeah, so and first, I do want to say we definitely have a good working relationship with Fulton at ACDC. But again, they do have, we have 700 beds available, so it's roughly 230, 240 that's vacant. They, all of their female detainees, the majority of their female detainees are at ACDC. So they are housed there, unless there's some type of serious medical or medical, mental condition, they are with us at ACDC. So they, I, I think, and they've been transparent about it, once they get their staffing numbers in a good place, they'll be able to fill more space, but they are sufficiently filled, fulfilling the space that they are in now. And, you know, obviously, we are open to expanding that relationship to assist them. We understand the major challenges that they are having at Rice Street. So whatever we can do on our end, I talk to Sheriff Labatt constantly, and we have a good relationship. So whatever we could do to support him and his team, we are willing and available. So whatever we could do to support him and his team, we are willing and available.
Thank you. And I did, I looked at the numbers. So most of the, most of the detainees that are over there are female?
Yes.
Which is good to know being seen Wright Street. Okay, thank you. That's all my questions, Madam Chair.
We have been joined by the Honorable Michael Julian Bond, and now we will hear from the Honorable Antonio Lewis.
And Chief, I just wanted to say this because one year ago, you and I talked about this, that we, when the state, the national, when the state expanded cash bail and we talked about the numbers going up. So I wanted to just make sure I said this comment right now. We, in 2023, before this, before the state, when, we do know the city of Atlanta, we, Councilmember Boone and councilmembers was on the council at that time period, they actually got rid of a lot of over 18 laws, 30 additional crimes, 30 crimes that were misdemeanors and traffic citations that were allowing people to have a signature bonds. And one year ago, on June, on, I don't want to be wrong about the date, but one year ago, the, our, our, our state legislator actually passed a law to expand cash bail. Since then, we went from 192 to 346. That shows, and that's people in there. How's that affecting us? How's that affecting you?
So we do have adequate staffing. We have seen those numbers go up as I presented earlier, our average daily population, two years ago was at 43, now we at 111. And then you saw the in custody court numbers continuing to increase as well as our booking numbers. But as for, as staffing, we are in a good space with that. So I haven't seen any major challenges on our end. Occasionally, we have to use overtime, but overall, we're in a good place with that.
And but question on this and follow up question, your opinion, but your educated opinion, your expert opinion. The, before the state actually brought back those crimes and said you had to be jailed and they got rid of organizations that could pay a person bail, then they got rid of organization that pay your bail twice. Before that happened, were you seeing people get out of jail faster? Or are you seeing more people just sitting there longer because of this?
Our numbers, at one point, our average daily stay was about a day, day and a half. Now it's up to three, so not a significant shift. Of course, with the signature bonds, a lot more were able to, to get out of jail quicker, but not a major shift.
Thank, thank you.
The Honorable Michael Julian Bond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chief, for your report. But before I begin my questions, I just wanted to touch on two things. One, about the contract that we have with Fulton County that Councilmember Collins alluded to. One of the things that affects the Fulton County Jail and our facility is the way that that contract with Fulton County was negotiated. Unlike every other contract of its kind in the country, Atlanta is the only jurisdiction that doesn't provide full security for the inmates in the rented space, meaning that Fulton County has to send over deputies to watch their detainees. That is not the way it's done everywhere else in the world, right? The host agency typically watches the detainees that are being housed there. That causes a dearth of employees at Fulton County to help better manages, help Fulton County better manage their situation at Wright Street. At some point, the contract with the city of Atlanta and Fulton County, in my opinion, should be amended so that our people watch the detainees and that frees up, what, 30 to 45 deputies that could be helping to secure the Fulton County situation. So they'd have those deputies over there. And then the second, the second part is, you know, during the whole conversation about cash bail over the last, I guess, six or seven years, one of the things that the advocates and those in the previous administrations failed to realize is that we have had a pre-trial release program for almost 30 years in Atlanta, right? So the whole conversation around cash bail, you know, whether the state is going to allow us to do something or if we're going to forego charges, we've had an extremely effective program for 30 years assisting people to sign their own bonds. And to avoid all of the controversy that we've had over the last five to six years, all we've needed to do is expand our own pre-trial release program that's run by the court. We can designate as a city or those municipal charges that we want to see people get released from, we can just fund, you know, or expand what's considered under pre-trial release right now. They have officers that work, you know, intricately in the corrections department. You know, our former clerk, Forrest Webb, that's where he and I met. I was a correction officer. He was working in pre-trial release 30 some years ago. And they, they would screen people, monitor them, you know, help them get out, you know, follow up with them to go to court. Everything that the bail release movement was trying to do, we had a program that was already doing it, but the previous administration didn't acknowledge that and went the route that it went. And that caused a political reaction at the state when the state came back and disallowed everything that the movement did, when all we had to do was expand our existing program. And guess what? We can still expand our existing program if, if we wanted to do something, you know, in that vein. So that's something to be considered. But to my, my own questions, I don't really have that much. I wanted to compliment you, Chief, and the staff of corrections for what you do because you all do it out of the sight of the public, right? For the majority of the public. So people don't necessarily know, you know, what's going on or how much you all actually do outreach outside of the wa, walls of the facility. We, there were some recruits at our last ATL Fresh and Free that were on site that helped us serve almost 1,200 folks out there at Mount Vernon Baptist Church in about 95 degree heat. So I didn't want that to go unrecognized and wanted to compliment you and thank you for that. And thank all of the folks who work in corrections, who work outside of the view of the public that do an outstanding job. So, and it's a very dangerous job. People don't, don't realize how dangerous it actually is. So just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Also, Chief, if you all, Chief Johnson, if you all would let us know if you would like commendation letters for those retirees, please feel free to let us know that as well. And again, we thank you for treating our citizens very humanely, making sure that you all run a top notch facility. Myself and my colleagues have toured the facility and we appreciate that. And to our interns, there are several careers in corrections. There's finance, there's communications, there are so many careers in corrections. So please pay attention and learn all you can do. This is a great profession. Again, thank you, Chief Dancy, and your entire team.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
Next, Department of Law Quarterly Update. City Attorney Patrice Perkins Hooker.
Good afternoon, Chairman Abum and other council members. I'm going to start out by, like I always do, try to let you know that the Department of Law is just not me. And so the representatives I have with me on the leadership team are our Deputy in Charge of Litigation, which is Tori Smith. He's the one who created most of your agenda with regard to these settlements, so there's a real face. He's a Morehouse alum and he is, he's been with the city on and off for a total of 14 years. And then I have Patrick O'Connor, who is standing in for the deputy who deals with the business services, but he is actually our division chief in charge of real estate. And he has taken the place of Michael Ward when Michael left earlier this year. So we have some leadership representatives. The rest of my deputies are on leave in various places. So I just wanted you to know that it's more than just me doing the work of the city. In addition to that, since you recognize interns, we have several interns. The Department of Law, I think, has just a tremendous quantity of interns, but right now I have a few with me. So those interns who are interning with the Department of Law, please stand. All right. And then there were some people from your group too, there's some council members. We have a total of 11 up there and some of them are from city council and they go back and forth between council activities and law department activities. So thank you all for being here today. You all were presented a copy of our presentation in June. We didn't get a chance to make it, so we are providing information about that report and then we'll respond to any questions you might have about the information in the report. These are updates since January of 2025. And they go for the period of January through March. So basically, third quarter of our fiscal year, but the first quarter of this year. And we covered division metrics, revenue and costs recovery, update on claims and settlements, and then outside counsel reporting. Our first division is the litigation division. And we have been shifting our focus from outside, use of outside counsel where possible, to using more inside attorneys. And under our deputy's leadership, we have decreased the percentage of cases that were assigned to outside counsel. In fact, this is kind of the first quarter that we have done under 50% of them. So I'm ecstatic about that direction. I also want you to know that it does reflect the commitment that the city made to increase salaries so we could get some depth in some areas that cost a little bit more than just regular attorneys. But of the 300, 287 cases that we had opened at some of that period in time, 151 of them were being handled in-house by the team we've amassed there. We have settled and closed out 37 litigation matters. And I provided you a little bit more detail this quarter of how we settle those. We have been winning cases and that's probably one of the quiet secrets. The city of Atlanta's been winning cases, getting cases dismissed on motions for dispositive judgments, like motions for summary judgment, motions for judgment on the pleadings, et cetera. And then we've had actual cases where we've got six judgments, we've had six voluntary dismissals when we put forth our arguments with the other parties, just said, okay, we're going to go home. And that's great because it saves us money and it saves us time. And then we've had the dismissals by the court when they found that the pleadings, even before we have made the motion, they just said this is not a valid litigation matters. So I want to give compliments to our team for doing that and continuing to work in that direction. Our claims team is a subset of litigation and that is where the public interacts with quite often. They file a claim against the city for damages done to their vehicles, damage done to their property, from water leaks, et cetera. And you all just settled, approved the settling several of them today. Those things keep coming. They are in the hundreds, they have the volume of our practice. And the young ladies and gentlemen who work in that division just get onslaughted by just the mail every day, just hundreds of claims. Right now, as the end of the, the third quarter, we had 194 new claims, 238 claims resolved. So that meant that there were 400 and some odd claims in that period of time. When you think about that, that's a lot of people complaining about everything. And then they start complaining, saying, I want a million dollars because my axle and wheel got destroyed by running over a pothole. First of all, we have to know that the pothole is there and fail to have taken any action. And they have to provide evidence of that. And then we try to go back to, okay, how much did it cost to get your axle fixed? And those are why you see the numbers so lower, so much lower than what was demanded. But we have a track record of paying out only $24,083 when the demand was $285,829 in claims for that same period. It's a tremendous amount of work. We do investigate each claim. It takes time, it takes time, it takes time. And I want you all to work with me when those people call you up and say, well, I submitted my claim in January and this July I haven't heard from them. It's not an instantaneous claim process. With the volume we have, we have a backlog, we try to prioritize them by date and time. We are working on the last part of 2024 claims. And by the end of this month, we will be caught up with 2025 claims. So people can at least know how much we proposing to resolve the claims or how we're going to settle them. In addition to the claims portion, we have quiet title and interpleater actions that are taking place where we try to recover money for the city for liens that are filed. These liens deal with actions by someone who's trying to take property from taxes. And so they put the money into the registry of the court and then the city has to file a claim to receive outstanding taxes or liens it has. And then we are proceeding with trying to collect water, water and wastewater bills and the demolition liens as well. We collected $64,568.54 in those particular actions. And we submitted claims for new actions, so pending 15 claims for $290,000. Our next group is a group that deals with real estate matters. And this chart, I love the fact that they chose a lovely skyline of Atlanta, shows that they have had a total meetings of 361. They have total real estate matters of 124. And so this particular group spends a lot of time negotiating with parties with regard to the transfer of the properties that you see on your agendas from everything from, we support parks, we support the strategy office and policy office, the housing initiatives. This group is very busy and the transactions vary. Everything from the transfer of easement on a street corner to the development of a large scale housing project with the Atlanta, Invest Atlanta and Atlanta Housing Authority. Our business services group handles all of the issues associated with legislation, administration and city council. And this particular group, it's this team, that's Amber and I, this team has handled 185 matters for the areas that you see there. And then we also have support being provided through Lauren Clayton to zoning and Charlie Hewlett to zoning matters, staffing zoning boards and zoning relation, related boards. We also have a group that helps with finance and executive. For example, I deal with staffing the pension, I think it's defined benefit pension board. I actually work on that one. But we also have a defined contribution plan board that's also staffed by attorneys. So there are a lot of attorneys you never see, but they are working on behalf of you in these roles and we had 185 matters by that time. All right, the municipal governance team, team deals with everything from the solicitor's office, finance, the municipal court, public safety. They support the police, fire and corrections. And I think I've got a couple of members of that team here supposedly with me, or did you stand out? Yes. Back at the back. Brianna is here and she's our younger member on the team, but we have two others. And we're just glad that they enjoy this type of work. We handled a total of 765 matters and they are divided by the different departments that we supported. The finance matters primarily are focused on bond transaction and transactions dealing with garnishments of city employees. We handle all of those proceedings as well as the collections or establishments of liens for the water as well as wastewater activities. And our colleagues from municipal quarter here to see that we don't do a whole lot. It's for, for the solicitor as far as advising. Raines handles that pretty well, but if they have problems with the judges or the judges have issues, they, they communicate with us, which is why we had two matters during that particular quarter. Our next group is labor and employment, and I saw one of our attorneys from that group as well, that Mr. Foster, Joshua Foster, stand up. And Zepha, okay, we got both of them here. All right. And these, this is our division chief in charge, in charge of labor and employment. They're a mighty team of three. This is one of those areas that we could reduce the amount of outside counsel tremendously if we could expand the labor and employment group significantly, but that's been a little harder. It was one of those pricier lawyer groupings that makes it challenging to get people who want to do labor and employment litigation. And so these people do labor and employment advisory services. And you see from the chart, they have 327 matters that they handled in the third quarter. And those range from everything from providing reviews, policies and procedures. They draft the policies just like the parental leave policy that we just kind of implemented earlier this year. As well as we handle internal investigations when referred by HR. And we review information dealing with discipline and termination. And we do that in order to mitigate lawsuits. But we're not just being nosy. We want to make certain that it's handled properly, there's proper documentation and we're able to sustain any challenges that relate from those terminations. And then we have provided for you a spreadsheet of the matters by the requesting departments of those 327 for just that particular time period. And you see that we represent everybody. And generally, everybody has an employee or two on employee issue. Our next group is the Transportation Public Works and Safe Team. Our office, as you may know, is one of those little lesser known visible things, handles all of the reporting with regards to e-filing for safe benefits and the affidavits you have to file to say all of your employees have passed the immigration standards and have had the documentation in place. But the leaders of that group for operations, they've got two of my division chiefs. You've seen Stephanie Grant here dealing with transportation all the time, ATL DOT. And then Roger Bahari, who's been dealing with Department of Watershed Management. And I actually think, what do y'all does, who does Public Works as well? That's right, you got both of them. And so they are here and that team has handled a total of 365 safe and e-verify matters and 544 matters dealing with everything involving transportation, sewer and water. And that's a very busy division because as you know, from seeing all of those things that come through your subcommittees dealing with utilities and transportation, there are a lot of moving parts with regard to contracts, with regards to acquisition of right of way and with regards to how you deal with the actual advisory services that are needed to make certain all that stuff stays well in order. And we also dealing with litigation and advisory services on litigation, dealing with EPA and water compliance that takes up quite a bit of time. Our next group is the Watershed Management, since I led into that already. Roger works with that one. And that watershed deals with all of these issues. We have a team of people who help support him, but they deal with everything from the Waste and Sewer Appeals Board, staffing that particular tribunal, as well as dealing with the riparian buffer technical panel. So we have attorneys who attend those meetings in addition to handling the administrative advisory services to those particular matters listed, that total 304 in this quarter, this past quarter. Aviation is one of our larger teams. And they are focused on keeping Atlanta's busiest airport and almost 6,000 people who work out there, working seamlessly. Those people include everybody who works at the airport. And I think we have about 3,400 people. I don't think anybody is here from that team. Most of them come and commute from the Aviation Center as well as they have offices here. But they handle everything that comes down the road. They handle all the procurement, all of the contract negotiations with concessionaires, termination of concessionaires, compliance issues, dealing with the FAA. So it's a very busy group, as you can imagine, being the revenue generator that the airport is. There were 1,086 such issues and those issues are provided on that list. Now, this is one of those areas that we have in-depth staff. The, most of the aviation matters are handled in-house. The Division, the Deputy over Aviation has been here over 25 years. The Division Chief for Aviation has been here about 22, 20. She worked at the airport and then we brought her back because she happened to be a lawyer. But there are a lot of people. Martin Clark is one of the senior members of that team and he's been with the city in a lot of different capacities and he still is working, helping with OCC. So there's a lot of things going on with that particular client. The outside counsel report, this is just reflecting our spending all the way through cumulative for the third quarter. And actually goes a little bit further because we took the spending through May 31st, which was the date closer to the hearing, I mean, the committee presentation date. The comparison between fiscal years says that we spent $9,570,000 in total and it's indicated by fund. And in fiscal year 2025, it was at that time $10,491,730. This increase of 9% is a result of all of the increased unforeseen litigation that occurred during last summer to this May, including the Chattahoochee River Keeper situation. We don't have environmental lawyers, none. So we can't handle any of those cases ourselves. Then we also have some issues that are associated with wrapping up through the appellate process. The public safety training facility also required extensive amount of legal services. So we have been working with finance. We are within the budget that they have set for us, but it is tight, 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 tight every year. And that's why we're trying to get more and more things done in-house because external counsel, even though we've negotiated some great rates with some fantastic lawyers, it still costs a lot of money. All right, council members, any questions?
Yes, thank you so much for that very detailed report. We really appreciate that. And you're a very, very competent capable staff who answers so many questions for us. No matter what time, we always want to talk to the Law Department. So thank you Attorney Hooker and Ms. Amber Robinson. Thank you for all you do for this entire body. I do have some questions regarding the administrative interim proceedings
Yes.
that are now the judicial interim proceedings. But I would like to hear from our colleagues first. But again, this wonderful staff who we work arm in arm with, we really appreciate you all. The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
I just want to say thank you as well for, ever since you've come on, the reaction from the law team. I've just seen so much interaction from me and it's always been so helpful. Thankful to Ms. Amber Robinson, Attorney Robinson is what I like to call her because she's been able to make sure that we get the right legislation, make sure it's written the right way. Today, Councilmember Bond spoke about how the city can expand our, not bail reform, but our, we can expand our powers with bail. And I would like to know if you or Attorney Robinson can start working on some of these things to combat what the state put in to get rid of things that we've done in the city. So I'll be reaching out, but I wanted you to put your mind around that. Because I saw Councilmember Collins' head start getting peaked as well as when he mentioned that. So if possible, if we can work with you all on reforming this for us.
And what I will do is I will have the people in our public safety, the Municipal Court team work on that, no problem. We have to analyze whether or not we have the statutory bandwidth because you know, sometimes the state does things, as Councilmember Bond says, to stop us from doing things. But to the extent we have any local government flexibility, we can figure out a way to address those needs.
And lastly, Union Man, full out, understanding doing stuff in-house. So to see you all hire good folks and you handle stuff in-house has been amazing. And same thing we're trying to do with Watershed, same thing we're doing with the Public Works Department. We know we save money when we do stuff in-house. And I think we have the most capable people already working for our city. If not, I think we need to hire more capable people to make sure we're able to do the stuff in-house. So thank you for practicing of bringing stuff in-house.
We're trying.
The Honorable Michael Julian Bond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam City Attorney, for such a thorough presentation. I just wanted to add my compliments to yourself and your staff, particularly Ms. Robinson, who we work very closely with. And just wanted again to extend some praise to you. But I do have a brief question. One is about, you mentioned that there are no environmental attorneys with the city. Is that a conscious decision or that has just worked out as happenstance? Or it seems like with, as we, I guess, approach the end of the consent decree, that we're still kind of in need of that kind of expertise? Is there a reason in particular why or why is that?
Our biggest issue is cost and we don't have a salary range that allows us to hire environmental attorneys. The law firm that does the bulk of our work is Troutman and they have some really competent environmental litigators who have worked with the city for decades. But to pay for somebody like that would double the salary ranges that we have. And we, that decision was made before I even got here that we would not below the salary range to pay someone $250,000, $350,000 a year salary to do the work. And so we end up paying a lot of money outside for it, but it is a specialty. It's a niche that unfortunately, I don't think that the taxpayers want to pay that much money for. And so they never added that particular category or classification because of the range of salary.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
The Honorable Ishay Collins, followed by the Honorable Mary Norwood.
Great, thank you so much for this informative presentation. Just really quickly, could you share more details for us in terms of the impact of the new tort law, well, tort reform law that has passed through the state? I know we've got, you know, I know with, as we think through settlements and claims and, you know, litigation, all, probably what all your office deal with. Just wanted to get some more clarity on how this, the new tort reform law that was signed, and you know, new state law will impact, impact the department.
The only problem we have is I actually actively lobbied with our legislative advisor to get it to expand to municipalities and they didn't. They didn't take the opportunity to take the GMA version of some amendments to that that would have really helped us. The only, so we are not covered by the increase or expansion of sovereign immunity that the state gave itself. That's the first thing. We were trying to get there. I wanted to be able to limit the ability of someone to recover from us for anything. It didn't matter to, you know, a million dollars was a good cap number that was proposed. The state has that, we don't have it and counties don't have it. Deputy Smith, are there any other technical things that you noted from that state bill that would impact us?
Yes, Tori Smith, Deputy City Attorney for Litigation. That is some of the benefits to municipalities, to the extent that there are some in the legislation, which is some of the technical aspects of jury selection and some of the process of how we file our answers and being able to dispose of cases more quickly by not having to file an answer to complaints, but being able to file motions to dismiss. So there are a lot of technical aspects that deal litigation wise with how we can defend the city that are beneficial when it comes to tort reform. There are some caps that are associated with the new legislation. I'll be honest, we are still working through because most of our cases were filed before the legislation. So we're only have a few cases that are new enough that they fall within the legislation. So we're still working through all of the impact that the legislation has on our cases specifically.
But for the most part, you're saying that immunity piece with the cap, that you are hoping to expand to cities and counties was not part of this legislation.
Was not part of this legislation.
That's really good to know because I think that's what, that's some of the misinformation. Yeah, I think that's some of the misinformation that is out there. I think people feel that everything was passed comprehensively in its entirety, but to know that it doesn't include.
There were several things the GMA tried to get in there that did not pass. But what I can do is we can send a briefing member to all members of council to let you know what is in there for us. And these technical requirements will help us a little bit because we may be able to do some things, more things in-house to try to get cases dismissed. But it doesn't really limit the liability, which is what the state tried to create with that, the liability limit that we could have used a lot.
Thank you. And then my last question is slide three. When you, and it also goes with what you were just stating with the reference to outside counsel costs, where a large, like, you know, you have this 136 of the open litigation cases are outsourced. Just curious in terms of what type of cases. I know you talked about the environmental cases. Are there any other kind of like, I guess, consistent trends that you're seeing for those cases that you do need to outsource to outside, you know, counsel, just based on what we're seeing?
Large-scale, complex litigation cases involving class action lawsuits, cases involving catastrophic deaths and injuries that are major. The case that involves Spago, the child where the police officer shot someone. In those cases, no, we don't have that type of death just yet. So we have several firms and a stable of firms that we use to randomly assign those matters. Things dealing with the OIG, who knew? Nobody had a whole lot of experience with that. Or the subsequent federal lawsuits that has arisen for that. So that is handled by outside counsel. And then all of the constitutional cases associated with annexation. We don't have any constitutional lawyers. Generally, Robbie Ash and his firm has kind of developed a sub niche specialty on how to deal with municipality challenges with annexation. And so he handles a lot of those.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
The Honorable Mary Norwood.
Yes, my question is about the judicial interim versus the administrative interim. Because I've wanted to see judicial interim so that we could get paid, so that liens would get, would get implemented. But my question is this, back when we were first discussing this years ago, one of the factors that could be applied or that we were hoping could be applied would be whether or not you had a homestead exemption. And the point of that is if you are a senior with limited resources and you live in your house, but it's got issues with it versus someone who is an absentee landlord or an abandoned house or whatever. But to me, what we were saying way back then, this is several years ago, is if one of the factors in how to pursue that particular property was the absence or presence of a homestead exemption. So my request is if y'all will look at that and whether or not that is defensible as a criteria and determinant on how things are addressed.
We will look into that right now. Just comes to mind as an equitable protection argument where homeowners who own similar types of houses, as in residential and commercial, those categories of how you treat them generally can't be broken down into little bitty compartments of whether or not they're seniors or senior. So we.
Not senior.
I know you said.
But just homestead exemption, yeah.
And that's what we'd have to look at.
Yeah, and just that, no matter who you are, how old you are, anything else, do you live there? Is there a homestead exemption attached to that property? Because I think that would help in not catching people that just are dead, where they've gotten difficulty in bringing repairs versus what we all know with the blight and having blight now be a cause for eminent domain. It's so important for our communities to not have those blighted properties. And so I love the judicial interim that y'all are doing. And just wanting to have that as maybe a safeguard for making sure we're doing the best we can to expedite, eliminate, should I say, bad behavior.
Okay, we will definitely look into whether or not we can do some type of differentiation based upon the status of a homestead exemption. But we have worked with the Municipal Court and the Solicitor's Office specifically to go through and initiate the judicial interim proceedings. We had six filed initially, another six were filed shortly thereafter. And I've been informed that 13 will be filed tomorrow. So there are 26 of the 60 cases that may, that have been identified by code enforcement that may be addressed toward the blighted properties that you mentioned. But we have also reached an agreement that the properties that are dealing with clean and clothes, part of it is that type of work, just clean and clothes. enclosed property, that type of work, just clean and close because the dollar amounts are much smaller than a demolition lien, that we will go through the judicial administrative interim process with that.
Yep.
Which allows the property owner more flexibility in dealing with the amount of money and payment times, et cetera. But the other.
That's a good decision. I like that. I like that a lot, yeah.
Okay, but they will also be able to respond to that too because we work, they work for me doing it, but they've done a great job with doing it.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. For the viewing public, will you tell us exactly what will happen with the administrative interim board right now? And exactly what is the difference? And is the administrative board, the judicial board is as flexible as the administrative board?
The adminis- nothing has happened at all with the statutorily created administrative interim board.
They still meet?
They still, they don't meet because they're not cases referred to. They only met when there were cases referred to them anyway. Right now, and I think Ms. Tally is here, there are only two cases that would qualify under this clean enclosed. And so they're waiting to have enough cases to have a full agenda. But so they haven't been meeting in a while. The major cases that we've been processing through code enforcement were cases that were more blight-related properties, more repeat offenders, failure to make repairs properties. And those are the cases that are, we're dealing with trying to get a demolition lien on and then trying to make certain that we correct that for the citizens of Atlanta. So the difference between the two is the administrative interim process did allow flexibility for the solicitor to negotiate payment arrangements, et cetera, with the particular property owner, give them more time to make the property repairs, bring it up to code. But it didn't provide enough legality with regard to the process of notice and service on the property owner to be collectible. And that was the problem. You could go after the property only, not the property only owner and the property for any debt that was associated. And then a court case came out, really, I think it was last year, late last year or early this year, that actually said, and I think we sent that in a memo to you all, that actually reflected the fact that administrative interim liens were not the same priority, were not collectible against the individual owner, and they would not last more than seven years. Well, those three components, once I got a copy of the order or what, I decided we needed to do something different in order to collect the money for the city. And I think that case was, I think I have it here. It's Flat Rock Falls LLC versus Labatt. And it was a Georgia Court of Appeals ruling that came down since I've been here and that's how we shifted. But everything else is about the same and I've got people over here who can weigh in if I got something wrong.
So how many appointees did we have for the administrative interim board? And exactly what will they be doing now? If they are not meeting, if they only have two cases? It seems like we could dissolve that board now. What is the purpose of that board at this time?
Ms. Tally will tell you because they staff that board.
Okay. Because I know we went through great lists to get that board televised. So tell us a little bit about this, Ms. Tally. Thank you, Director Tally.
Good afternoon, Daphne Tally with the Atlanta Police Department Code Enforcement Section. Currently there are nine members on the Administrative Inroom Review Board. And as Madam City Attorney stated, our goal is to shift the clean and closed properties over to the Administrative Inroom Review Board. We have two now, so we don't want to bring or have a hearing for two hearings. So we're trying to get up to 10 cases and then we'll bring those members in as needed. So we haven't dissolved the board, they're still active.
But it does not seem like they're active to them. It does not seem like they are active to them.
I understand that.
They walked in one day to a board meeting and they were told that their services were no longer needed or that it was shifted. And we need to either dissolve that board or figure something out because they are not feeling good about this.
I understand that.
They walked in, they.
In February and they were informed.
No one met with them about it. No one said this is going to happen and they were stunned. And how did this happen without notifying them or a discussion?
So we were informed probably the week of the hearing as well. And we were instructed to share that information during our last hearing. So I do understand that they are still, we still have a board, they just have not met since February. And again, we don't feel that it's necessary to dissolve the board. I think the city has an advantage when we have additional tools in the toolbox. So I would rather not dissolve the board at this point in time. I do understand the feelings of not meeting every month, but it's our goal to try to get them back maybe once a quarter.
So Director Tally, it's a lot, from what I've heard, it's not what we did, it's how we did it. And we have to always be mindful of the treatment of people that are serving the city of Atlanta. They walked into a meeting and they started calling their council members who appointed them or the various boards that appointed them. And they were told that they were no longer needed. So let's try to either fix that or let's completely dissolve that. If they are not needed, let's not waste their time. These are business people, they are good people, and they were completely stunned. It's always how you do something. So let's make sure that we're not leaving any bad feelings out here about their duties. Now, if they're not needed, let's dissolve the board. But again, I want to thank you for what you do and your team. Ms. Beasley, you all work tirelessly and we appreciate that, but we want to make sure that folks are treated properly in the city of Atlanta.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions or concerns? Thank you. At this time, Atlanta Citizens Review Board, Mr. Lee Reed.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, Committee Chair Boone and committee members. Lee Reed, Atlanta Citizens Review Board, here to give an update on the MOU. Before I get started though, I want to acknowledge Board Secretary Adrian Prola, who is here. She'd like to make a couple of comments.
Yes, greetings, Councilmembers Collins, Boone, and Lewis. I just wanted to mention that I'm a member of the Atlanta Citizens Review Board and this MOU that you'll be looking at was not created in a small, closed meeting. It's the result of a lot of hard work between Executive Director Reed, ACRB staff. Special thanks to Peter Amen from the Mayor's Office who really was integral in crafting this. And it also has a lot of input from the Atlanta Citizens Review Board. So it's a, Mr. Reed describes it as a living document. I think that that's the best way to look at it. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Secretary Prola. I also like to acknowledge Deputy Directors Marla Smith and Sheena Robertson, who are also instrumental.
Please stand, please stand. Any other staff here?
No.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
They're very instrumental in working with me on this document. And of course, you all know the Mayor's Strategic Team, Peter Amen and Lily, my darling. What you see before you is a summary of the MOU with the highlighted portions of what's changed since the last time I was before you all. As Board Member Prola mentioned, we've worked on this for several months. As you know, this all started back in January and we've been working on it since then. We've had several revisions, several different drafts, input, and this is truly a collaborative effort to try to correct, not try to, but to correct some issues that were raised and ensure that we have proper communication and accountability and transparency going forward. Want to take a few minutes to walk you through this document with special emphasis on the highlighted areas. When we first brought this MOU before you, it only involved, also involved shootings and death in custody. We recently, maybe about two months ago, included serious bodily injuries in custody and firearm discharges. As you see on the next column or row, we talk about the training. One of the, one of the big recommendations that came from the board was APD incorporate the MOU into relevant SOPs and training staff accordingly. We find it is very important that everyone that's going to be involved in these cases that are going to need to be transmitted to the ACRB, related to notifications, closure of investigations, need to understand what their expectations are and the accountability that would come with that. So having it included in the SOPs, the APD SOPs will add some force behind that. We also added that the ACRB board members will attend Citizen Police Academy as part of orientation. Board members already attend, but we thought it would be important that that's also noted in the MOU. We want to make sure that everyone understands that we take it seriously. These often involve shootings, in custody deaths and serious bodily injury in custody and firearm discharges. But make sure that board members are trained and able to do the work to assess those cases and make decisions on those cases when they come forward. ACRB may observe, APD recruit and officer training and provide training on legal standards, including use of force, employees' rights against self-incrimination. A part of assessing these cases when they come forward is understanding how officers are trained when we talk about use of force, when we talk about mental issues, when we talk about de-escalation. We want to make sure that we are aware of the training that is occurring and that when there are changes to the training, we're also aware of those. And one of the best ways is being able to actually put eyes on it and see the training as it is occurring. Moving down to the service level agreements. Another significant change that was added, implementation meeting will follow MOU signing to align stakeholders and ensure integration into SOPs. This goes back up to the top, as we talked about, training. We believe that a joint meeting between APD and ACRB as it relates to implementation and how that is going to occur to make sure that everyone is aware of the changes that are related to MOU and the expectations. We want to make sure that we're able to map that out so that everyone is on the same page as what needs to occur. We talked about under notifications, you see APD may solicit ACRB feedback. This is related to policies and definitions related to use of force. We believe that it's important that ACRB has an opportunity to weigh in or provide opinions, recommendations when we're talking about those, those policies that impact use of force. Use of force actions are the most challenging activities that a community experiences when they go wrong. And so if we're, if we're discussing policies related to the use of force or changes related to use of force, the ACRB would definitely like to participate in that as APD is considering those changes or when they consider those changes. The next three highlights relates to hours of notification and closure of investigations and the sharing of files. Originally that was 48 hours, based on feedback we received, is reduced to 24 hours for the APD provide those notifications. And we believe that that should not be an issue. In the past, when there were notifications that we were notified of, we received those well before 24 hours. Also, APD will provide ACRB written explanation, will find a discipline imposed is greater or lesser than ACRB recommendation. We believe this is important so that we can all be on the same page as the understanding of why decisions are made, how decisions are made as it relates to the ACRB recommendations and APD applying their policies to their own disciplinary complaints, situations. Finally, we have a couple of reports that are going to be generated out of the MOU that would be related to monthly reports. I'm just making sure again, we are tracking what's being sent, what was not received, when it was received. We want to tighten this as far as tracking and notifications and closures. And then we also have the issue resolution that hasn't changed of how we're going to deal with any issues or concerns as they come up. As Secretary Prola mentioned, this document is designed for us to continue the conversation with a framework that allows us to do work and bring in the accountability and transparency that we need. Things that were not tightly relevant to this MOU are still being considered and will be discussed because we're always about process improvement. We're always about how can we do things better? How can we serve the community and the police department through our work? Before I conclude, I do want to again thank the ACRB staff, the board members, the APD, the Mayor's Strategic Team. This was a collaborative effort, took a lot of months, a lot of drafts, a lot of discussion. I think we're on the right path, no, we are on the right path to continue success with ACRB. And as I always say, leading the nation and how to do civilian oversight. And I don't say that lightly, but it's the truth. And we're going to continue to do what we're supposed to do, the way we need to do it. And with that, I will end and I'll take any questions.
Do we have any questions from the body? The Honorable Antonio Lewis, followed by the Honorable Ishay Collins.
And my questions are, will be straightforward. Does this document prevent us from going through what we went through earlier in which you were on the news and which we were on the news talking about things that you've been told? And we find out that the news did an open record request and the things that you were told were different from the things that were in the open record request? So will this fix that?
That is the goal and the intention of it, and that's what we're going to make it do. Yes.
You say that's what you're going to make it do. So I want to know if possible, because I also see the first, the first sentence, I mean, the second update under this, under service level agreements, you talk about the MOU.
Well, I'm sorry, what?
I apologize for not, for not, for not writing down the exact note, but in here it talks about how you all will always be looking at this MOU and updating it? And so is there, I, I just want to make sure that you're being given the information that we don't have to listen to the news and listen to the AJC doing open record requests and what they get out of it is totally different from what you're saying.
I, I definitely appreciate that, having gone through it. It's not something I want to go through ever again either. You know? When we say go back and, a living document that we will be looking at, everything that we would like to have, it's not in this right now. So there's conversations that we will need to continue to have that will deal with technology, coordination between the departments. And then there's also some discussions that will need to be had dealing with some other departments that may have some interplay in what we do. You know? So this is not the end. This is a very good start. And this is, and guess what? As Councilmember Boone told me a couple of times ago when I was here, well, Lee, if you're having a problem, come and talk to us. So if we're having a problem, guess where I'm going to come? I'm going to come and talk to you. And I'm going to take your word on it that you're going to help me work through the problem when I have a problem.
I appreciate you and any, I think my colleagues know anytime I see Peter Aiman's name somewhere, I know that it was a well-thought-about and intentional document. So thank you and thank you to Peter Aiman and, and everybody who touched this. When I see, we got some District 12 folks in the house, Ms. Adrian, Ms. Adrian also helping out. So thank you for this and thank you for putting this forth and come to us.
I will.
Once again, you know I am not, not only an advocate for the people having access to things, so a super advocate for the people having access to things. Thank you.
Thank you. And trust me, I'll come see you.
The Honorable Ishay Collins.
Sorry about that. Yes, ditto. All that Councilman Lewis has stated. I just do have a couple of questions, just kind of understanding this, the draft. So in terms of the terms where you, for section in, in, in scope and out of scope, I know you do, you guys do a deeper dive on and defining what is seriously bodily injury in custody. But then on the second page for, out of, from 1.2.1, one of, one of the things that are out of scope for this MPU is serious, excuse me, MOU is serious bodily injury. What's the difference?
In scope, serious bodily injury would be those that required the medical attention that we may have learned from some other means or from the, from the police department or from the news. We would be able to investigate. Then when you talk about the, I mean, the out of scope would be a citizen can file a complaint related to some serious bodily injury that they received, but it wouldn't necessarily be tracking under this mechanism. Because under our ordinance, we can take serious bodily injury with a signed complaint, which necessarily wouldn't fall under this process. That's, that's the difference. But it also, serious bodily injury, if we didn't get a complaint, we can now do it without a signed complaint.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, so with this, if someone had, if someone suffered seriously bodily injury in custody while in the custody of the police department, this MOU guides that process?
And they, and they didn't file a complaint? Yes.
Right. And so let's say they did, they, they, they weren't in custody, they weren't in custody of the police department, but their seriously bodily injury was a result of an act, you know, action of an officer, which still comes under the purview of the citizen review board, they would have to, they would have to file an official complaint and then that goes through the normal ARCB process, ACRB process, my apologies.
Yes. And a lot of that would have to do with if they filed the complaint with us, like let's use the serious bodily injury complaint, we could initially start on it doing everything we need to do with it. Now, if it's a serious bodily injury complaint that went through this process, then depending on who all else is involved in that investigation, it may be a little delay as it relates to when we're going to be able to start it. So when we're out, we like to let people know, file your, sign, file your signed complaints, right? Going back to why this originally became an issue is because often involved shootings, we never, not never, we rarely got a signed complaint from anybody. These were incidents that were happening in the community that we were not aware of, that we did not have anything to do with. This created back in 2020 was to close that loophole so we could be involved in that process. But there's still, we still can take signed complaints, like using a serious bodily injury or death, we can still take those signed complaints as well.
So yeah, so just for clarity, and I may, I do think as you guys get this to a final version, just kind of thinking about fleshing out what that looks like, just because as you read, it does come, it could appear as if it counsel each other out. You're saying seriously bodily injury in custody is in the scope of this MOU, but then out of the scope, seriously bodily injury is, so I just, it probably just opened up for some interpretation. Just, just question on that. And then for section three, your service level agreements, the cycles that you have on an annual basis, quarterly basis, and monthly basis seem to be the same. So just kind of curious on terms of what, what are, what, what are the differences? Like what is, you know, maybe that's, this is another document that would align to this that kind of goes into sort of like that kind of the strategic goals or the metrics, but which, what, what would be the difference of a annual, having a meeting at an annual basis versus a quarterly and a monthly basis if some of the things stated are the exact same?
Yes, the quarterly, monthly are definitely dealing with any issues as they arise or any challenges or concerns. When we talk about the annual, it's the overview of the process, the program, how it's working. What are we doing, you know, the any things that we need to look at again? But even when we say the annual between, I think that's the chief and the ED, we're not limited to just the annual. If a situation arises that requires us that we need to have a conversation, we'll have that type of conversation. So it's not any limitations, it's saying this is what, we, we know we're going to have this meeting regardless. But anytime there's an issue that may come up that can't be handled during that bi-weekly, monthly meeting, it can be raised to our level to be able to deal with it.
And, and with this service level piece, the chief will meet with the actual ACRB board annually?
Yeah, that's, that's the board, yes.
So they'll meet with the board, so the chief will meet with the board annually, but your quarterly and monthly is just kind of issue specific, you know, based on?
Issue specific or just routine coordination between the departments? Now, that annual meeting with the board is ensuring that the chief comes before the board. The chief and I try to meet at least quarterly, just to touch bases, make sure everything is going the way it needs to. So that's a, a different type of meeting.
Got it. And then my last question, just section four, the issue resolution piece, and I know you said a phone call to the other party or a letter or email to the other party, and it just has, the chief shall, shall call the ED. I didn't know if it was any conversation about or even putting in terminology or a designee, just in terms of kind of, I guess, maximizing, maximizing time and capacity? Because I, I would imagine that you'll probably get a lot of, you, you probably get a, a lot of calls just in terms of issue resolution or general information period, but, but here I just was wondering in terms of, is it necess, is, is there the necessity that, that it has to be the chief and the ED, the chief and the ED, or could this be over something signed? You know, a responsibility signed to a designee on both sides for engagement, but also as we've approved a budget to allow you to bring on other people as well?
Right. Good question, Councilmember Collins. Designee would be appropriate as well, because at the end of the day, we want to make sure that if there's an issue that one of us is not available, we can start, continue to have those conversations. And as things rise, ensuring that the chief is looped in, ensuring that I'm looped in. The goal is, we don't want anything festering, anything just lingering around, lingering around. We're not trying to do that. We don't want to do that. We're not going to do that. But I will look at that.
And that was just a suggestion based on what you, what you just stated, just making sure you all have the full support that you need. I really appreciate you guys bringing this draft together. I'm really, I'm really excited to see the progress of what this could be. So my last, my last question, and then I'll yield to you, Madam Chair, is what is your projected time, what's the projected timeline for completion of this MOU? Is it by the end of this first quarter, end of this calendar year? What does that look like for you? And how, how can we support?
Okay, with completion of this, this MOU, this document? We have secured the feedback that was needed. We've, we've all looked at it and I am confident, I am confident that we are ready to proceed right now unless council has some input or some thoughts that we would need to take back to the teams and discuss. We are ready to move forward now. You know, this whole process has taken us from some things that we need to do. And so we want to start implementing this process and start holding people accountable, making sure that we have transparency, making sure that, making sure that the thing works. You know, and one of the best ways to make sure it works is going to get it signed and make sure that everybody's operating under it so that if we have a problem next week or two weeks or three weeks from now, we can't resolve it, I can come back to you and say, well, this didn't work and we need to do something. But I don't anticipate that being an issue. So we're ready to do it.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Do we have any questions from the body? So Mr. Reed, what we like to do is take this wonderful document that you have given us and we will give a copy to other members of the Atlanta City Council. And if they have questions, better yet, why don't you email them?
Okay.
Email them this document and this packet and ask them for their feedback?
Yes.
And we appreciate you all taking the time to do this. We're going to look carefully at it. But again, thank you so much for this report. If there are no questions or concerns from the body, any more items, Mr. Overton?
No, Madam Chair.
This meeting is adjourned.